Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Policy Committee meeting on this Tuesday, February 11, 2025. A few housekeeping items before we begin. This is a reminder that this meeting is being recorded on Teams and the recording will be posted on HCDSP's website. Everyone, if you've not already done so, please mute your laptops and use the board microphones when it's your turn to speak. If participating via Teams, keep your microphone muted and camera off when not speaking. Please use the raise hand function in Teams when you would like to speak, and then please lower your hand when your time is done. I kindly request that the land acknowledgement be played at this time.
Holton, as we know it today...
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped-in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
And animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Let us begin our meeting this evening with an opening prayer by Trustee Duarte.
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Let's just do the Our Father. The Our Father in heaven will be our name. Your kingdom come, and it will be done, earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, for you those trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's move on to item number two, which is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I please have a mover to approve? Thank you, Trustee Powell. May I please have a seconder? Trustee Duarte? All in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there or does anyone have any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to item number four, delegations. There are no delegations this evening. Item number five, we move into the approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the January 14, 2025 Policy Committee meeting? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 14, 2025 Policy Committee meeting? May I please have a mover? Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Could I please give a seconder? Trustee Powell? All in favor? Anyone opposed? I do not see anyone opposed, so the motion passes, and we can now consider the minutes as approved. Moving on to item number six, these are the action items. So moving into item 6.1, Policy II-42 Medical Conditions. The first action item on our agenda is Policy II-42 Medical Conditions. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-42 Medical Conditions be forwarded to the February 18, 2025 Regular Board Meeting for approval? Looking for a mover?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, and I see Trustee Murphy had her hand up.
Yep.
Okay, seconded. Superintendent Bukic, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to begin this evening's meeting with Policy II-42 Medical Conditions, which was reviewed as part of our regular review cycle. The application and scope and references have been updated, and I have updated the requirements to reflect current practices. Minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. I'm happy to take in questions that trustees may have.
Thank you. Trustees, I will now open the floor if there are any questions or clarifications required. Seeing none, we will now take this to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly, who should be online.
Ah, yes, in favor.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy. Trustee Powell. Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee Yaboah.
In favor.
I am also in favor the motion passes. The policy will be brought forward to the February 18, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to item 6.2. The next action item on our agenda is Policy IV-06. I just had a brain cramp. IV-06 School Sites and Facilities Criteria. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy IV-06 School Sites and Facilities Criteria be forwarded to the February 18, 2025 Regular Board Meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Seconder? Trustee Powell, thank you very much. Superintendent Loftz, you now have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We're pleased to present Policy V-06. Sorry, hold on. Through you, Madam Chair, pleased to present Policy IV-06 School Sites and Facility Criteria for Review. This policy has been updated with very minor housekeeping changes.
Thank you, Superintendent Loftz. That IV is really messing us up today. Trustees, I will now open the floor if anyone has any questions and/or clarifications for this policy. Okay, seeing none, I will now take this to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Yaboah.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Powell. Trustee Murphy. Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
I am also in favor. The policy will, majority, it passes. The policy will be brought forward to the February 18, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Okay, moving on to item 6.3. The next action item on our agenda is Policy V-03 Photography Advertising and Sales. Trustees, may I please have, could someone please move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy V-03 Photography Advertising and Sales be forwarded to the February 18, 2025 Regular Board Meeting for approval? Looking for a mover? Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Looking for a seconder? Superintendent Loftz, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. We're pleased to present the Policy V-06 Photography Advertising Sale Representatives for Review. This policy really has just been updated again with very minor changes in housekeeping type items.
Thank you, Superintendent Loftz. That was very quick. Trustees, I will now open the floor if there are any questions. Okay, seeing none, we will now move on to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Powell. Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Favor.
Trustee Filbert.
Favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Yaboah.
In favor.
I am also in favor, so item 6.3 passes. This policy will be brought forward to the February 18, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Okay, moving on to our last item, 6.4, Policy V-04 School Fundraising Activities. The final action item on our agenda this evening is Policy V-04 School Fundraising Activities. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy V-04 School Fundraising Activities be forwarded to the February 18, 2025 Board Meeting for Approval?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte? Powell seconds, thank you very much. Superintendent Loftz, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are pleased to present Policy V-04 School Fundraising Activities for Review. Similar to the other ones, this policy has been updated with very minor housekeeping changes and such. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Superintendent Loftz. Sorry, one, just give me one. Thank you, back in action. Okay, trustees, I'll now open the floor if there's any questions. Okay, seeing none. I will now open, I will now take it to a recorded vote. Oh, sorry, Trustee Murphy, you... Hundred percent correct, yes. Thank you for that, and you did send it to everybody early, so we will ask Claudia if she can put that up on the screen there. Take your time, Claudia. Thank you, Claudia. Trustee Murphy, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Um, yeah, I feel like this is through you, Madam Chair. Fairly straightforward amendment.
Point of order. Point of order.
Trustee Duarte?
Motion Amendment needs a mover and seconder.
Hundred percent right. I stand corrected or sit corrected, actually. May I have a mover for the amendment? Trustee Murphy will need a seconder?
Saunders.
Trustee Saunders, okay. Now it's at the board table, we can talk about it. Great, thank you.
Um, so yeah, I offer this as an amendment just to provide some transparency for parents or guardians when there is a fundraising event for which the charitable organization that will be receiving the funds, if it's not clear. I personally have had a few incidents where constituents have not known where funds for certain activities are going, and they've asked, so I just thought it'd be nice to have that clarity for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Superintendent Loftz or Director Klein?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I'll defer to Superintendent Bukic, just because she might have more information just working in the schools and such than I do.
Sure, I can take that. Thanks, Trustee Murphy. I mean, I think it's a process that is in place, but if you've given an example where sometimes the communication doesn't follow through, it's my understanding in talking to a number of principals, administrators at the schools, that when it's quite clear that funds are raised for a specific purpose, for a specific group, and it is in conjunction most often with school council, it's captured on the annual school generated funds plan, and if something else comes up throughout the course of the year, then it's brought to council. There's communication via newsletters, et cetera, through the school too, but I, it really pretty much solidifies what the practice is already.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Yeah, I looked through the related procedure, and I thought there'd be something in there that would say that, and I was just gonna copy and paste it in just to ensure it was visible in the policy. I do think that it's good to have in the policy to ensure, like, I'm just thinking about potentially maybe, like, there's not many, but maybe like Civis Day sometimes at secondary level, it's not clear where the funds are going. Perhaps it is, but I think there are parents who aren't aware, so if it's just shared in some format that would ensure that everyone knows, that would be great.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Director Klein?
Really, just to reiterate what Superintendent Bukic said, to me, the question is, if there's a potential problem, a hypothetical problem, do we have avenues? Do we have strategies to address it? And I think that one that she noted earlier in terms of garden, any garden variety issue or concerns, go to the teacher or the staff member, then I go to the principal, then I go up if I need clarity or if I need some form of rectification of it. I think that's in place.
Um, can I just comment on that? Are you, just through you to Director Klein, I'm not, I'm not saying that if they have an issue with the charity, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that it's just made clear, so if it's a voluntary donation, they can decline if it is not something that they, or maybe they already donate privately, whatever their reason may be, it's just more clear, transparent.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. I just offer up for consumption, if usually the practice is it goes through the council as far as fundraising, are we stepping on anyone's toes? Because this doesn't designate how the parents are informed. Is it through the council? Anyone can answer that question?
I can jump in, Chair. It typically comes from the principal to the community, but there's a lot of communication through the school and in partnership with school councils, even when they're issuing their own communication to parents. I think, like I said, Trustee Murphy, I think this encapsulates what the process is already, but it's fair to have it reflected in policy.
Wonderful. Anyone else? Chris Saunders, Trustee Saunders, sorry.
No, I agree. I think transparency and clarity is the best.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, are we all ready to vote on the amendment? Oh, Trustee Powell, I'm sorry.
I just had a question.
Yes, sure.
Um, sorry, we were just going back to the council, because I mean, for, I don't know, 27 years, I've never, never had an issue, like, I've sat on council, I've sat on, as a parent, so it's usually been clear, like, I've never, I've actually never experienced where it is unclear, and if anybody has asked, it's usually all over the school, if you have trouble with what the charity. So I'm just wondering, what is putting this in here do for school councils? Are we directing some councils on what to do?
Thank you, Trustee Powell. I think it looks like Superintendent Bukic, maybe you can speak to that.
Well, I'm not involved with, you know, the procedural side, but I think, you know, as a parent myself, usually you get an email saying, there's gonna be a Civis Day, and we're raising money for X, Y, and Z. That's it. And in some cases, it's great that you haven't had any issues, but I do know that there has been, and so it's just a little gap that I think would be great to have it closed up so that there's always that transparency.
Trustee Powell? Powell?
Yeah, wouldn't I go back to that? Like, how is the...
Thank you, Trustee Powell. I want to take it on the ride, like, now a procedure, right? So this is the policy, it's in the policy, so now we hand it over to operations to actually execute the procedure. So maybe Director Klein, may I address it with Superintendent Bukic as far as the procedure is concerned, if we add this to the policy?
Thanks, Chair. I mean, it is, I would say it's operational nature, and, you know, certainly, like I said, it is action that, for the most part, I don't want to negate Trustee Murphy's feedback, but for the most part, this is, this is the process that happens within the schools operationally, so I understand, you know, some of the comments, it is a procedural matter, but, I mean, certainly it could be added to the procedure, it's, I leave it though to trustees to decide if they want to keep it in policy or not. I don't know, Director Klein, if you had anything further, but that's how I'm seeing it.
No, don't.
Trustee Powell?
Yeah, may I ask a follow-up? If, like, so how would that be? How would that be implemented? What do you, what does the procedural look like?
Thank you, Trustee Powell. Superintendent Bukic?
Oh, the procedure, the associated procedure for this policy is VI-59, and it's part of the package, so...
Sorry. I guess, the implementation, how do you...
Uh, it certainly is a reminder that we would provide to admit. As I said, it's a very widespread practice already. I mean, I've, I have these conversations with principals all the time and try and get as many examples for trustees' benefits, but I recognize that, you know, it's, we're not all perfect, there could be a gap. I mean, Director Klein did explain, you know, the avenue for, for parents to get clarification if they don't understand. It hasn't been my experience with my administrators, and I've worked with a number of them across the board, in their process for delivering the information, because it's a very symbiotic process with the, with the school councils and the parents, and it's a very, it's a collective of students and, and staff, so, but I, you know, again, you know, things might break down in the communication process. For our purposes, as a system, giving information to principals, it would, it would be a matter, of course, for us, or, you know, things that are reminders when we talk about school fundraising in general, I mean, it's often a topic with Superintendent Loftz. Again, it's, it's, I don't want to repeat myself, but it is a process that we already
Thank you, Superintendent Bukic. Trustee Agnew?
Uh, thank you through, Madam Chair. So somewhere along the same line, so, you know, in, so Trustee Murphy's putting this, sorry, Trustee Murphy's putting this through, you know, intentionally because of some concerns that have come forward. So I think it's one thing if this is supported to have this added to the policy, but to Trustee Powell's point, and I think also to what Trustee Murphy's saying, is if, if this is actually coming through as an amendment to this policy, what's the guarantee that this is actually, like, the way I read this, it says, "The school shall disclose." So whether or not that's being done consistently now, what's the mechanism with which there's a guarantee that that shall be disclosed? I think that's, I think that's what I'm trying to understand. So if we're gonna go through the process of putting this into the policy, what does that procedure look like? Like, will the procedure completely reflect this so that there's an actual mechanism for this information to be intentionally shared with parents in advance if it's not already being done so?
Thank you, Trustee Agnew.
Like, not being problematic, I'm just trying to understand. If the whole point, though, and maybe I'm wrong, Trustee Murphy, but if the whole point is to put this in, and you're saying it's already happening, or, you know, you're saying it's already being done, then either this is not needed, or if this is needed, then what's the procedure to ensure that parents are in fact being told in advance if the inclination has been that this is not happening consistently? So I'm just trying to understand, because I think the two have to go together, or you don't need this?
You know, I can, I can speak to operationally what happens.
Sure.
I mean, having both been in the school and now as superintendent overseeing a number of schools, this is a fairly well entrenched practice for schools to notify parents, we're going to be collecting funds for X. It can be, it doesn't necessarily have to be a charitable donation. It can be, as you know, schools can, can fundraise for, you know, set amount for technology, et cetera. In this specific case, when it's charitable organization, it could be an organization that whereby the school council has asked for funds to be collected for, nothing comes to mind right off the top of my head.
Yeah, like, rest assured, aware, whatever it is. Right?
And so the information goes through via school newsletters, via the classroom, it's, it's captured in school council minutes. I mean, there's, there's many avenues for communication for schools out to the community. I think that what you're trying to get to is what happens if somebody misses the communication or I, you know, there is a gap somewhere, and typically, the word gets out, like, if a parent has a concern, they do reach out to the school to say, why are we raising the funds? But it's most often because charitable fundraising involves everybody in the community, it's hard to miss the information. But again, I, you know, things do happen. There, we do have ways for people to get information. This, this by nature is, yes, something that is operational, and the, and the schools are required, namely, the, the principal does get the information out. I, I don't have the example, Trustee Murphy, I wish I could help that way, but it's been my understanding and my experience, and I probably could speak on behalf of a number of SOs where this is a very typical practice when we're fundraising for schools, because it is, it's a widespread engagement of people.
Yes, Trustee Agnew?
So I completely get that, and I've sat on council, like, I'm just saying, if this is, if this, if this is here, I think you need to have it in both. I think if this is gonna go forward and be an amendment, then I believe it should be in policy and in procedure. Now, I'm not gonna tell you what the procedure looks like, but when you had said, like, principals are required to provide that information, is that outlined in the procedure now? Like, are they actually required to provide that information? So if this, if this amendment passes to this policy, and there's no procedural component that actually requires this information to be shared with parents in some intentional way, then there's a gap between having this amendment and actually having that information be required to be shared. That's all I'm trying to figure out. Superintendent Bukic? So I just, I think if you're gonna put this in, it should be in both, or else it negates the point of this amendment, is my view.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. I think Superintendent Bukic is ready to state wisdom.
Yeah, absolutely. Trustee Agnew, it would be, if this passes, it would, it would be captured in the procedure as well, and I, we would amend it.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukic. Trustee Saunders, your hand is up?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with this. It just is a reminder of what to, what needs to happen. It's already happening, but I think Trustee has mentioned that there is some, some gap sometimes, so I just think it's just a reminder that this is something that has to be done, so I think it's okay.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Trustee Murphy, your hand is up, is up from before? Okay, and I just, if I, if, go ahead.
So just, just to clarify, because I know we had some Q and A here with Superintendent Bukic, who was going through the, I was a principal for like 13 years, and so there were a lot, you were doing this all the time, and very often, at the start of the year, you had a plan, you had your plan co-signed by someone on school council, go in, we're gonna have our big fundraiser, little fundraiser, every board has different rules around it, and then you had ones that popped up, often terrible things, a tsunami, starvation somewhere, and then, I've never seen it where it wasn't advertised. I was in schools once where it was just a terrible thing happened to a family, and we just all pulled together and did that. However, the interesting part of this is it, it is, and I think this is maybe what Trustee Agnew was heading toward, this is kind of a policy, a procedure in policy clothing. It is sort of a policy now that has written a procedure. So in that sense, it's an interesting rubbing up of two plates that are governance plates. So I would say that, that is a reality that has to be acknowledged. So this is a, something within a policy that de facto is writing a procedure, and I think that's possibly problematic.
Thank you, Director Klein. You kind of led me to my two cents about this. I understand the spirit of this, there's gaps. Obviously, there's gaps, and it's operational, so that's up to you, as a director of education, to close those gaps with a procedure, with the people, right, that you govern, right, in the school board. I'm just concerned, because if we start adding procedurals into policy, there's an overarching problem that could be more problematic. Like, I understand this amendment, but I'd rather have the spirit of putting a procedure and leave it out of the policy, if somehow we can get to that. Because I don't want to start seeing us putting operational things, my own personal opinion, into policies, that's procedural in nature. That's just my comment. So I'm probably gonna vote no for this, but want it to be in a procedure so that the gap is closed from what Trustee Murphy's saying, because it sounds like there's a gap. Yes, ma'am.
So, so how does that happen? So like, if I, if I find a gap, if something gets exposed to me, then do I just say nothing? Or do I, tell me what I need to do, please?
So in my opinion, Trustee Murphy, and Director Klein is to my left, and Superintendent Bukic, and I trust them implicitly to hear the voice of the Policy Committee to say, we, there's a gap. Trustee Murphy is advising a gap, well done, of course. Name it, right? Put, can you put it in a policy? I mean, sorry, can you put it in a procedure?
Well, the answer is in terms of we could put all sorts of things in a procedure, but I think, to me, I'd want to, again, go back to, is this the tool that we pull out of the toolbox to address the concern? Or is the concern, for instance, two and a half years here at this table, I've, I've never heard that complaint. I've never heard that as an issue, as, as something around those charitable organizations, and never knew we were raising money for X or Y. So I would still go back to the original wondering, which is the, the policy and procedure we have in place for a communication or complaints. So if I... So if I, my kid is asking for money one day to go to the school to hand it in for whatever, whether it's Civis Days or something, and I go, you know, what is it? And there's no sense of where this money is going, then I think I would want to be talking to the principal of that school to get some clarity around it. And I think that would be the procedure and the policy that's in place for it.
No, I hear what you're saying.
So I'm not sure if Superintendent Bukic has anything to add to that, but that's my thought around it.
I respectfully disagree. I think in a procedure, you could just say, make sure there's a way that parents are communicated when you're fundraising. Make sure your staff does it.
I would also just like to say, just to close this, is that I, I'm sure that most principals are doing amazing jobs, and they're trying, they have a lot, you know, to remember to do, and that isn't, this is in no way a reflection on them. It's just a gap that I noticed as I was reading through pages and pages of documentation, and my role is to oversee these things and to ensure that the people who I represent have their, you know, I'm losing my thought here, but their requests fulfilled, or, you know, if I see something that I think needs to be done, that's my role. So I've decided to add this amendment, we can certainly leave it to the will of the board, and, you know, take it from there.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Someone once said to me, feedback's a gift, so it's a gift, thank you. That's right. Okay, we ready to vote? Looks like it. Okay, so what we're doing is voting on the amendment to item 6.4. Trustee Dwork.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Murphy. Trustee Powell. Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee Yaboah.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
And I am the lone opposed. Okay, so this amendment does pass, and we're going to now vote on the policy as amended. For amendment. Okay, I don't see any other hands up, so I think we'll just go right into the vote if nobody minds. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Powell. Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Filbert.
In favor.
Trustee Yaboah.
In favor.
Trustee Dwork.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
And I am opposed, but in favor wins, so this policy will be brought forward to the February 18, 2025, regular board meeting. Thank you, everyone. So we are finished with our action items, and we move into discussion items, item number seven. There are no discussion items this evening. Moving forward to item number eight, items 8.1 to 8.11, which is 11, are the administrative procedures provided for your information, and were already approved at the February 3, 2025, senior administrative meetings. Item 8.12 lists the upcoming agenda items for the next Policy Committee meeting on April the 8th, 2025. Wow. Item number nine, miscellaneous information. There is no miscellaneous information, and nothing was added. Item number 10, there was no correspondence submitted. Item 11, there is no in-camera agenda this evening. We do need a motion to excuse absent committee members. We do have an absent trustee, Trustee Carabella, so may I please have a mover to excuse Trustee Carabella?
Saunders.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. May I have a seconder? Trustee Murphy, thank you very much. Let Trustee Carabella be excused. All in favor, or is anyone opposed? Seeing none opposed, that passes, perfect. May I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, Trustee Saunders, and then Trustee Agnew. Thank you. We will now end the meeting with a closing prayer by Trustee O'Hern Chernoda. Name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. We're going to say the Our Father again, because it's a powerful prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Be those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Be safe tomorrow out there, and thanks for putting up with me tonight.